This is a new opportunity for me to be the lead spokesman. So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. It is now seven o'clock. Let everyone know that this is being broadcast live and is also being recorded for later broadcast. And with that, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
And we will begin with our student representatives. If you want to come up and join us at the head table there, and if you keep the microphone between the two of you, we'll be able to pick up the sound. And please introduce yourselves to the committee.
Hi, my name is Jordan Provost.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Barch.
Thank you for having us. I am here along with Stephanie Barch, and we are here to discuss the events and activities that have occurred this past month.
First off, we had a spectacular month. It has been a great year of success for all grades. As the year is coming to an end, the Douglas Middle School is preparing to say goodbye to the current eighth graders as well as welcoming new sixth graders to come. The eighth graders have had a memorable experience these last three years and are almost ready to move up a level in schooling, whether it is taking place in Douglas or other high schools. There is only twenty days left of curricular activities, not including today. Even though the time is short, the students plan to make the best of it.
With the end of the year coming, Dinner Dance is being planned for the last week of school for the eighth graders. The theme of the Dinner Dance is Masquerade. The students are able to wear masks and have the last dance together in the middle school. The seventh and sixth graders have been doing well also and are excited for summer to come.
Although the school year is coming to an end, there is still MCAS going on in the middle school. The sixth grade had MCAS yesterday as well as today for mathematics, while the math MCAS for seventh and eighth grade is tomorrow, as well as Friday, and eighth grade will finish up with science MCAS on Monday and Tuesday.
Diving into sports. The girls softball team and the boys baseball team is doing an incredible job. Douglas Middle School went against Sutton today. Another spring sport that's coming towards an end is track and field. On Monday, May thirteenth, the track team hosted DVC for six other teams. The girls are in second place and the boys received third place. Another after-school activity is student council. The student council is working on preparing Field Day for the middle school, which will take place on Tuesday, June eleventh. We have many fun activities planned and are hoping for beautiful weather. The middle school band and chorus have been doing amazing this past year and have had a concert and have a concert on May thirtieth. The school band and chorus both won gold medals at their festival. For all their hard work of the band and chorus members, they went on a trip to Six Flags on May tenth.
There is many field trips coming up very soon for all grades. The sixth graders and seventh graders are going to the Boston Museum of Science on May twenty-second and June third, while the eighth grade is going to Canterbury Lake Park on June tenth. The eighth grade also has their promotion that will take place in the afternoon on June twelfth. On this day, there will also be a Dinner Dance, which consists of only eighth grade students to celebrate their last year as middle schoolers.
Overall, the Douglas Middle School students have been working very hard. Everyone is very excited for the end of the year, as well as the new ones that will come. We would like to thank you for having us tonight and throughout this past year. Have a good evening.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Lot of stuff going on. The end of the school year will be here before you know it. I find it interesting they're looking for good weather. I'm not sure where they're gonna find it.
(laughing)
We certainly have not had much in the way of good weather for a while, but thank you both very much. That was very good. At this point, we'll move on to public comment and communications. The school committee welcomes public comment on items that are within the scope of the school committee's responsibilities. The public comment agenda item is reserved for this purpose. I don't see any public comments possibly unless Mrs. Hayes, that's what I'm saying. So, we're good to go. And then we will move on to the next order of business. First of all, we'd like to welcome Rebecca to the school committee. Welcome. You're gonna love it. It's fun-filled, it's action-packed, it's a lot of excitement. It's gonna be great. We're very glad to have you here.
Thank you.
And congratulations on your victory. But the next thing we need to do is we need to sort of reorganize the officers and the committees. So, at this point, I guess we will be taking a nomination for anyone who may have an interest or we would like to bring forward as a possible chairperson of the committee, and then when that person is successfully approved, I can turn this over to them and they can finish out this process. So, do we have any nominations?
I nominate Brett Argle.
Ms. Kelly?
My second.
Okay. So, Julie, your second. Are there any other nominations that would like to be made? Hmm. Any discussion? Any discussion from your standpoint? Like, geez, guys, thanks a lot? Anything that you might want?
Thank you. I appreciate the vote of confidence after my first year.
Okay. So, with that being said, I guess we will take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstained? Any? Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You have been appointed as the chairperson again.
All right. Nice.
I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you.
And are we gonna be going to committees? Is that what we're doing or not?
We will do vice chair next. So, yeah, so at this point, so we have two other officer positions to elect first, and we'll go to subcommittees. So, first up will be vice chair, and I'm looking for nominations for vice chair to take over in case I'm hit by a bus, so to speak.
Don't say that.
Okay, we talked about that.
Don't say that.
Yeah.
I would like to nominate Kelly Grady for vice chair.
We have a nomination of Kelly Grady from Lisa. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Becky. Becky, do you prefer we call you Becky or Rebecca?
I prefer Becky.
Okay. I've known you as Becky, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a nomination and a second. Any other discussion or any of the nominations for vice chair? Anyone interested that? Doesn't, people don't know you're interested. Okay. We'll leave that as well. I know it's tough with these nominations, like sometimes you want something and people just don't know it, so. All right. Does more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none?
Yes.
Thank you, Kelly. And next?
I'm seconded by, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Seconded by Becky.
Sorry, thank you.
And then we have our secretary position. Looking for nominations for a secretary.
I nominate Lisa Brown.
Okay, we have a nomination from Kelly for Lisa Brown. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second from Julie. Any other nominations for secretary? Seeing none? Any other discussion on the matter? Seeing none. All those in favor of Lisa re-upping as secretary, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none. All right. We have our officers officially. Next, we should deal with our subcommittees. I forgot the list. I know I emailed it to all you today. Did anyone happen to print it?
I know, I was just looking to see if it's not here.
You have one? Thank you so much. Okay. Yeah, if I can just power this for now. So, this is our list of subcommittees from last year. I'm just gonna read through the list and who's on there now. So, we had our policy subcommittee, which was Julie Mulder and Julian Canaro. We had our budget subcommittee, which was myself and Lisa Brown. Lisa's listed as an alternate. That's a two-person committee, right? That she was in?
I'm sorry?
Yep. Budget subcommittee should be?
The sheet that I have here has Lisa as an alternate for the budget subcommittee. I don't think that's, I don't think alternate is the right term there. She was just a member.
Right, correct.
We have facilities use subcommittee. I'd like to come back to this one for some discussion. We have negotiations subcommittee, which is myself and Kelly Grady currently. Signing for payroll is myself with Lisa Brown as an alternate. Signing for accounts payable is Lisa with myself as an alternate. And then superintendent search committee was Kelly Grady and Julie Mulder. Returning to facilities use subcommittee, this is a committee after, I've been wondering why we have it, 'cause I think we have a facilities use policy, and we also have our administration team that makes calls on facilities use, so I'm not sure why we need a facilities use subcommittee.
I think this goes back before any of us.
Yeah.
This has been an ongoing conversation. It was a conversation when I first arrived and it continues to be a conversation, but it seems like it would just be part of the policy subcommittee. It is, it is a policy.
So, anyone opposed to us not filling the facilities use subcommittee?
Nope.
Okay, so we will not be filling the facilities use subcommittee. So, let's start, so rather than, well, I guess we can do the whole nomination and second and project, but let's just have a discussion if we can at first and what, who's interested in filling what. I think it's best if we can try to, you know, divvy up the work as much as possible. I think all of these committees are gonna be fairly busy this year. There's definitely meat on the bone for every single one of them. So, it'd be good if we could have, you know, everyone kind of, you know, pull some weight on each one of them, or pull the weight on individual ones, rather, to have it not fall on anyone.
It seems one of the things that would be the negotiations subcommittee, 'cause you've got plenty of negotiations going on.
Yes, we have our Douglas Teacher Association's contract is up this year for renewal, so that's gonna be negotiated over the next twelve months here. Superintendent Search Committee, again, we're still holding our hope that Mr. Maines, we can re-up Mr. Maines, but I don't think the chances of that are very good, as he's shaking his head over there. So, we're definitely gonna be searching for a superintendent the next year. And I do definitely think we have, we have some policy, not a ton, but definitely some policy issues that we need to address.
Need to meet fairly regularly.
Yeah. I think probably, yeah, I think there's something that needs to be addressed in the next couple of months, and then there's probably more that we should be addressed throughout the year. And then payroll and accounts payable and budget, those are ones that are kind of always busy.
Well, those aren't committees, payroll and accounts payable.
Yeah, but just, I guess, positions. And budget is busy.
Budget is always, yeah.
So, with that, policy, anyone particular, Becky, I know you mentioned earlier you'd be interested in that one potentially, so that's good. I think it's a good place for you to start as a new member, for sure. Anyone else interested in policy? Do you mind if I make notes on this?
No, go ahead.
And what we will do is we will keep returning to these until we fill new seats. So, for now, let's move on to budget subcommittee. I'd be happy to stay on with that one.
I'm fine with that one.
Lisa's happy to stay with me as well. Okay. Anyone else interested in budget subcommittee?
I'd be happy to be an alternate if you want an alternate on there. I know you guys usually handle it, but.
Yeah, I think that could be useful as well. Facilities use, we're scratching. Negotiations subcommittee, it's another one that I'd be happy to stay with. Happy is the right word, but I'm okay staying with.
You might want to rephrase that.
Adjective a little bit later on.
Yeah.
I'm willing to stay there if nobody else wants to take it.
I think, and Kelly brought up a good idea, we got to another committee earlier, but it could be a bad idea on some of these to have an alternate, an alternate as well. We can't have three people on a subcommittee, because then it actually acts as a quorum of the full committee in that case. So, our subcommittees can only consist of two people at the actual meetings, but having a third person on board is never a bad idea. So, if anyone's interested in kind of keeping track of negotiations pieces, as an alternate, we'd be happy to have you.
With regards to the negotiation committee, as you know, those tend to be night meetings as well. There is the possibility that it could be some day meetings, depending upon the makeup of the group.
Yep.
So, but they will be, that'll go on throughout the entirety of the year, 'cause we also have the custodians and we also have the cafeteria, right?
Yeah, but we do those internally.
Yeah, right. So.
And then we bring it to the, yeah, it's not like the DTA.
They'll still be considering those, so.
Yep. So.
I could be an alternate for that.
Okay. Whoops. Signing for payroll, I'm happy to keep that, but that's one that's open to pretty much anyone.
Does that have to be two separate people? AP and payroll?
It does not. I don't think so. And if we decide to do it that way, just so it wouldn't?
You can flip it, and since I'm there anyway.
Okay.
So, we're just gonna flip it?
Yeah. So, Lisa's gonna take payroll.
Very good.
Again, Becky, accounts payable is one that might be interesting, just to see all the bills. It's something that needs to be available during the day typically to sign for. And I could be your alternate for you if you'd want?
How frequent during the?
It can be.
It's weekly now.
Yeah, at this time of year, it's weekly.
Okay.
Most of the year, I'd say it's every other to even.
No, pretty much we're running it weekly now.
Even early in the, early in the school year?
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, 'cause she's kinda changed her process, yeah.
Okay.
She has, yeah.
Yeah, if somebody will show me what to do, I'll do it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not hard. It can be a little tedious at times, so.
What days? What days? Is there a certain day?
Typically on a Friday. Yeah, 'cause of the way it works. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Maybe not.
I have my little one with, like, I'm a stay-at-home with my four-year-old, so.
We can bring a little one with you.
If you don't mind.
I don't mind.
And if you want to, I can throw you on as an alternate as well, and we could figure it out.
I have markers. I make markers and paper available and things.
She's very shy, so she'll be quiet.
Lisa, you're gonna stay on with us?
Won't bother us, believe me. It's nice to see little ones around.
You only work with the kids in the building, right?
We do. I like the little ones, too. They're cute.
You're gonna take payroll, Lisa?
Yeah, I'll take them both.
You'll take them both?
She can be the alternate for AP?
Okay. And I'll be the alternate for payroll. Yeah.
Okay, so what?
Since I'm already there, it just makes sense to do the payroll.
Yeah. I got you, okay. So, we have Lisa for payroll and accounts payable, with myself as alternate for payroll and Becky as alternate for accounts payable.
Okay.
And then superintendent search committee? Anyone particularly interested in this? I know I sent an email about it. Julie, I just think you're the only one amongst us that's been through this, so I'd love to see you stick with it, but I think this is definitely one we need someone else on.
Yeah, 'cause there could be travel on occasion. I don't know that I can do that, so it would be good to have at least a backup.
There'd be some site visits.
Yeah, this is, I think, one that we talked about having.
It's daytime travel, that's something that.
Oh, the site visits tend to be daytime, right?
That's something that I can generally do. I mean.
And I can alternate.
But I think that's another one, that having three names at least, so that.
Interviews tend to be at night, and the meetings and review of, review of the resumes can be throughout the day, but the interviews tend to be at night.
Is this?
So, Kelly, would you be interested in staying on, Lisa as an alternate? That works? Okay.
Yeah, I'll stay. I mean, there might not be a lot of site visits generally. I think it's like three I did last.
It depends on how many you wanna bring forward.
Right.
Yeah, your interviews with your finalists, right?
And interviews could also be limited, depending on how many you decide to bring forward.
Yeah, so I was, you know, so Northbridge just went through this. There's a guy, I don't know his last name, but it's Mike for Schools. He has a Facebook page and a Twitter page over in Northbridge. He does a great job of kind of really kind of laying out everything they're doing over there. They've just been through it, so I've been kind of following their process. You know, you can get involved, but, you know, I think it's as involved as you wanna make it, too. I think they had six finalists, so they did six site visits. It all depends on how many finalists you have and whatnot, so.
Two, maybe, two, maybe three.
Yeah, so I'm not sure how many they started with, but, yeah. So, with that, then I'd be happy to kind of jump on policy in that case. And then, you know, I'm sure, you know, as superintendent search goes along, I'd be happy to kind of provide any kind of help and support with that as well as we go.
But I'm sorry, was that Kelly and Julie that are gonna be on the search committee?
Julie and Kelly with Lisa as an alternate. So, that feels pretty good. So, I'm gonna go down with what we had. And again, do these need to be voted on individually?
I think you do.
I think, I would think.
Can we present the whole thing? You just vote on?
I think either way, if you've already kind of already decided, I don't think it matters, whatever, whatever you would like to.
Okay. It seems kind of tedious to go through the whole nomination, whatever process of, you know, no one's really running against each other for any of these things, so. So, what I have is policy subcommittee being Becky Charnick and Brett Argle. Budget subcommittee being Brett Argle and Lisa Brown with Kelly Grady as an alternate. Negotiations subcommittee being Brett Argle and Kelly Grady with Lisa Brown as an alternate. Signing for payroll would be Lisa Brown with Brett as an alternate. Signing for accounts payable is gonna be Lisa as well with Becky as an alternate. And then superintendent search, superintendent search committee will be Julie Mulder and Kelly Grady with Lisa Brown as an alternate. So, looking for a motion to approve our subcommittee and other positions list for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, as presented.
So, moved?
Motion from Lisa. Do I hear a second? Second from Kelly. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none. All right. We are reorganized, rather, not renegotiated, reorganized. I guess it was kind of a negotiation, but thank you very much.
Thank you all for your willingness to participate.
Next up, old business. Have we heard anything back on our trails?
I have not heard, haven't heard anything. I did talk with Bill Kondif about that. I have not received any documentation as of yet.
Okay.
So, I can reach out to him again.
Did he feel like he was the right person to?
Yes, he said he would definitely get it.
Great.
Right. I'll reach out to him again Friday.
Great, thank you. Any new business now on the agenda that anyone would like to cover tonight? Seeing none. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Maines for our superintendent's report.
Very good, thank you. If Mr. Romano could join me for the first two. So, the first item on the docket is sort of an update on the renovations relative to the great flood of two thousand and nineteen, four eighteen.
Yes, the great flood of two thousand and eighteen, this is just the aftermath. So, the room is essentially done. The floor still needs to be waxed. Unfortunately, they moved the furniture back in, so they have to take the furniture out to re-wax it. There's odds and ends in a lot of rooms. There's a lot of rooms that still need the coping that goes along the edge of the wall done. There's a couple walls we found that looked like they were marked to be cut out and replaced that weren't. So, next week, the foreman is gonna come through and walk with me and Mr. Colette to nail those things down. The actual lab itself looks, it looks fantastic. Ms. Chapman, who was the teacher displaced from that room, she is gonna have a great room to go back into once the rest of it moves. And so, once it's waxed, we can go through the process of her packing up the room that she's been using now and moving into that, which puts robotics back where it belongs, which will finally put Ms. Abiki back where she belongs, and she's been a trouble about this, too. So, you know, it's down to like sort of the last odds and ends and little things, and the pods are gone. Everything's back in, so we're getting there.
Can I ask a quick question? Have we done anything to kind of remediate the situation? I guess any different kind of piping used this time around, or?
No, I think it's the same. I mean, plumbing is the plumbing, so.
Yeah. I just know they're going to a lot more PVC kind of plumbing and other kind of more flexible things.
No, I didn't hear that there was any kind of like move to something other than.
I think it was identical.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, and as Mr. Romano mentioned, Ms. Keegan, myself and Josh did a complete walkthrough, I forget when it was, but it was this week or last week? I don't know.
It was Monday, yeah.
It was sometime, but we did a walkthrough. We did create a punch list of things that we saw throughout all the rooms. As you know, it involved quite a number of rooms.
Yeah.
So, we did take a walk and we did make notation, and we'll make sure that those are addressed, so that when all is said and done, it's been completely covered and addressed. But it does look, it does look exactly like it did before the flood, so.
That's great.
That's a good thing. So, that's the update on that. If there's any questions other than about the piping of the water? Okay. So, the next thing we have is that the mock accident, which we did last Thursday. So, if you want to, Mr. Romano?
Yes, so this was my first mock accident, and, you know, I think it had a huge impact on the students. So, the juniors and seniors are the ones who observe it. I don't know if participates is the right word so much, but, but the, you know, they go through the entire process. It starts with, they go outside and they see the aftermath of a drunk driving accident. We had five students who were assigned to be the role players for that accident, the drunk drivers and the passengers and the driver of the other car. Douglas Police, Fire, and EMS all came and responded to the scene. They actually cut open the roof of the vehicle. They, one of the students is zipped up into a body bag, taken away by Jackman's Funeral Home. Others are put into the ambulance. Others are arrested. Then students come in, you know, they're handcuffed and put in a police car out in the parking lot. From there, the students moved inside, and they, the film is first, right? The booking film?
Yeah, the first thing was the booking film and then the operating room scene.
So, the students actually went, and during April vacation, they went down to the police station where they were filmed going through the process of being booked, calling home and saying that, you know, they've done something terrible. That part actually got to me. So, Adam Gallin, who was the, 'cause, you know, my son is that age, and my son is sort of in knucklehead mode right now, and so that kind of, I could just picture sort of that, you know, getting that call, and so, you know, tell Adam his acting was, very much was very convincing for me. There's an operating, a reenactment of an operating room scene where one of the other students dies on the table, and his parents are brought in. Mr. Bell, who very graciously volunteered to be the father, Ms. Durham, the math teacher at the high school, was the mother, and that, you know, that news is given to them. Was it John Furno that? No, it wasn't John.
No, one of the emergency response.
I think that's Fitz's son that told her, Ms. Fitz's son. They get told what happened, and then there is a song played. Sam Masood and Aubrey Harris performed a song that Sam actually wrote, and then there's the reenactment of a funeral, and we had other students who were part of that funeral procession. procession. And then Mr. Maines spoke. And by the time Mr. Maines is done, every student in the place is, is crying. So I think it has, I think it made a huge impact on, on the students. You know, it's not just, you can bring in like the district attorney to talk to kids and say, you know, all be safe, don't, don't do anything stupid. But I think this process of sort of seeing it all through and being able to kind of put yourself in that position. And then Mr. Maines coming up and telling his very personal story, I think that the impact of that is, is tremendous. A teachers who said that like they didn't want to come down because they cried too much at the times that they've seen it. So, and the students were excellent. And then we, we closed with, Chief Migliano gave a short talk about safety and very powerful experience, so.
Yeah. Just a couple of things if I could jump in, because Josh hit, hit on a bunch of them. There's, we did send out some thank you cards, but I would take advantage of the opportunity tonight to thank LKQ Auto Parts, their participation, Bosquet Towing, the good people at Jackman's Funeral Home who have always been very responsive and, and a great help. Josh did mention the highway, the fire, the emergency, the police. Both Chief Vincent and Chief Migliannico were both present for that. Mr. Riordan, Mr. Lashapella, Mr. Delencourt did perform a, a song that I have asked them to perform in, in previous presentations. Aubrey and, and Sam's was, was outstanding. Mr. Delaney provided two radio broadcasts.
Some voiceover.
Which were very strong and, and impactful. We had Jeff Colette getting the, the place straightened out in advance and locked off and, and blocked off and, and everything was, was fantastic. Shirley Mazinski from the community is, is an integral part of this as well. Her and Mary Sokol. Lauren Tibbetts did the makeup. When I went in to see the students in the morning and I, and I saw, first one I walked into was Devon Hare and she was all, I, I, I got, oh, I gotta get out of here. It was, it was really very, very realistic looking. So Lauren did all of that. The students that were involved was Devon Hare, Malina Schilling, Adam Gallin, as, as Josh mentioned, Caleb McKeon and Valdez Clark. And they did a really, really good job. And we did have some members of, I believe it was the.
The Drama Club and Pure Leaders.
Leaders who participated as well. Would like to thank Mr. Villamere, who also recorded a lot of these, the soundtrack, Mr. Delaney's information and the crash, actual crash. They did a, a short take of Valdez and Adam being in the car, talking about, you know, the, uh, something on their phone, passing the phone back and forth. And also talked about drinking and so on and so forth. And when all is said and done, the, the crash takes place and the kids go out and they, they saw it. So I think I've covered every, oh, Alden Encore in the music tech class, which did, they did a great job of helping us out.
The lights and the sound.
They did everything, the lights and the, it, it's a real process. We, we moved from different, different stages and some has a screen, some has closed the curtains, some has moved the microphones, bring a gurney on, take a gurney off, bring a piano on and so forth.
Music up, stuff like that.
They did an awesome job with that. And then very specifically Josh himself, Josh's first time with this. And he was intricately involved throughout the entire process, which was very helpful. And then Officer Feloni and Officer Yanino were the two leading representatives from the police department. And without question, John Furno, who has been an integral part of this. John and I had talked about this probably when I first got here, ten years ago, how I had been at Milford and we had done mock accidents there. And he said, we've always wanted to do a mock accident here. We've just never been able to do a mock accident. So, you know, he sort of was a driving force with it and, and he continues to be extremely involved in it. And he's very invested in it and does a great job. So all of those people, can't thank them enough for, for their assistance and their participation. And, and this is the fourth time we've done it and the same people have been involved all the way through. I mean, Brian was a parent one time. Now he's a radio broadcaster. The new guy got thrown into the fire this time and so forth. Mrs. Urquhart has been a parent as well. So they've, they've all had their, their opportunities to participate. But, and those are all the people that, that took place. So it was a very, it was, I think it went very well. The kids were very responsive. And, and Josh, it allows them to, to hang around for a little bit. One of the things that we tried to talk about was, you know, about best friends and, and how in high school, as you know, sometimes friends don't stay friends. And, and after all that you've seen today, maybe rethink this whole idea of whether we, you know, shouldn't be friends. Was it really that important that you had compromised friendship in given what could happen and so forth? So I thought it was a, it was a very moving and poignant presentation. And I, I also want to thank everybody that was involved in, in the process. It's not easy.
I have several questions that I want to ask. How long did it take to prepare doing? Just out of cur, like roughly, a couple of months?
So we had, we've been meeting for two months.
Well, probably two months, yeah.
About every two weeks for two months, we would meet, just to kind of, you know, make sure that everybody had their piece of their recovery. So a lot of, you know, John Furno's piece, like he's known what to do. Jackmans have known what to do. And then I think it was really just before April vacation that the recording started and those other pieces that, that really needed to come together, wouldn't you say?
Yep. I would say absolutely. It's, it's, it's a couple of months. You know, the, the other piece of it is just making sure that the kids know what they're doing. So there's no mystery out there because, you know, you can say all the time, all, you know, in, in a meeting that, yeah, I don't mind, put me in a body bag, it'll be fine. And, but at some point, they're going to put you in a body bag and it might not be fine. So, so you really want to make sure that we do all of that. One thing we didn't mention, I know we did waivers and I don't know, there was a few waivers that did come in, so.
Yeah, there were about a half dozen. And one, one student though, said that he actually thought he was signing up to attend it.
Oh.
So I did let him come. So I think there were five that, that sat out. And then there was one who, during it, you know, I had put out at the beginning, you know, if, if at any time, like you, you feel like this is more than you can handle, you can, you can go. And guidance staff were, were on hand to, to help out too, so.
I just think that, I, I experienced a trauma, traumatic experience when I was younger. And I think that I always had that in the back of my mind. And I think this is an opportunity where kids may have never had this experience thankfully and hopefully. And they can have that in the back of their mind. They can think about a familiar face rather than going onto YouTube and seeing some random stranger. They have somebody that they can identify with and it can maybe bring back some, something, and it could do something. I don't know. But did you do anything afterwards? Like, I don't know, like a questionnaire or anything like that? Like how you felt or do you need to have follow up or?
Do you, do you want, so we, yeah, we put out a couple of easels.
Yeah, the kids have an opportunity to write, write their thoughts on a couple of easels. And we, and we have, and I've got them collected from all, all the different years, but.
I have them downstairs for this year if you want.
But I don't, I don't know that we've ever done anything sort of a follow up per se. But I don't, I, I think in, in looking at the reaction of the students.
You don't need to.
You know, I think we had a pretty good gauge as to whether it had an impact. But I want to go back to what you were saying Julie, because the, when I was teaching in Milford, that was, I hate to say this, but it was probably thirty some odd years ago. They had, they had talked about it. They, you know, they had a group called the Students Against Drunk Driving, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, and it was a subsidiary of that. And, and, and I was just teaching at the time and they had the event and I went to it. And they had somebody that nobody knew, a couple of people that nobody knew at all. And, and they, they told their, their, their story and so forth. But it, you know, it didn't ring and didn't resonate with the kids like it did. And, and it was at that point I decided, I asked, you know, would you mind if I participated and, and, and shared my story about my brother and so forth. And it's clearly a significant difference. And we've had others come in and speak at the mock accident. And I think that it was greater than to do so. And I'm sure that it was, it was, you know, helpful to the students. But it doesn't have the impact as somebody, and like you said, down the road, in, in years from now, they, they, they think back to this and they're going to remember, you know, my face or, or Mr. Bell's face or whoever was there and so forth. Neelyan, when she was doing it, or O'Brien, when he was doing it. It's all going to make some sense to them and it, it'll all resonate with them. And that's what you're really looking for is for them to, it's to really impact their decision-making and to avoid, you know, destructive decisions and, you know, driving under the influence. So this one plays, as the last couple have, drinking and distracted driving. So the combination of the two. So, but you, you know, when you mentioned that, it, it rang in my head that, you know, they, they, they brought people in, you know, somebody who was in, in, had been in prison. They came out and they spoke, which was very poignant. But as a kid, you don't know who that person is. You feel badly for the, for the person and, and you feel badly for the family that was victimized by it. But you don't have a connection to it. So after it's done, it sort of goes away. But, you know, I think with the fact that these are familiar faces, I mean, John Furno's a very familiar face. The kids are going to remember that. Mr. Jackman is a very familiar face and they're going to remember that. So that's why it's, I think it's, it's more impactful. And we do it every other year, as, as you guys know, because we do it for juniors and seniors rather than every year.
And we did, we kept them about a half hour, about a half hour. So we kept them in the auditorium so that a lot of the kids wanted to talk to Mr. Maines, you know, because of the, the personal experience that he has with it. So, you know, a lot of the kids came down and talked to him. And I think you're exactly right Julie, is that, you know, for most of the kids, like they haven't had that traumatic experience in their lives. And I'm glad about that. And this, you know, for the, so for the students who maybe have, that's why they have that way out. But then for those who haven't, they do get this experience that, to an extent simulates that and maybe, you know, helps them to make better decisions.
I will say, some of the feedback I heard from kids, the fact that you have them stay and don't send them back to class is, that, that was one of the things that they commented on most, was that they got to sit and talk to their friends and, and that just made, made a big difference to them, that it wasn't just a, an assembly that we're doing and then going back to class. It was, it was much more important.
Right. You can't, you can't go in and emotionally beat them up and then say, oh, by the way, it's the bell rings.
So you head, head up to government class and.
Do damage to what they did. And I would actually kind of like cut it off and say, okay, we did that. Okay, let's move on.
They, they definitely appreciate.
And they did stay and they did talk. And it was, it was interesting to see the dynamic of the kids going in, in, and, and during my presentation, I, I talk about best friends and I, I give them a chance to stand up. And this time, it was really hard to reel them back in and get them back into their seats. Last, last time it wasn't so hard, but this time it was really challenging. And, I mean, they, they took it to heart and, and clearly you could see that they, and, and the really dramatic piece of it really, to be honest with you, was, was still to come. And they were already moved and, and, and concerned for each other, which is, which is what you're looking for.
Personal.
I think it's great and I hope that it continues beyond.
Yeah, we're, we're going to do it again in two years. You know, all the players will be there except for Mr. Maines. And I don't know if we can drag him out of retirement to come in, because, you know, they, there'll still be kids that know you. You know, they'll, they'll have known you as superintendent. But, you know, it, it, it is that personal piece that I think really adds the, the, the impact to it, so.
You know, I had the opportunity to tell them that I, I counted them up and it, that was my twentieth time doing it, which I thought was, I, I couldn't believe that it had been that many. And, and like I said, in Hope deal was every other year. And here it's been every other year. So, but in, in Milford, it was every year. And it was, it's, I'm glad, you know, but the, if there's one thing that came, comes out of it is that my brother who's been gone for almost forty years now, and I'd pass around a picture of him when he graduated from high school. And then I'd pass around a picture at the very end with myself and my other brother and, and him when we were, I was probably five at the time. It's one of those family pictures that I passed it around after I tell them that it was, that's my brother. Originally, I tell them it's my, that was my best friend. But then I tell them that it was my brother who was also my best friend. And so, you know, the tragedy that came out of that, you know, I feel good about the fact that over twenty years in presenting it, like you say, it may have influenced a few people. And hopefully they've made good decisions going forward. And, you know, if, if, I guess out of something bad, something, something good may have come out of it. So. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Romano.
Thank you both, yeah.
Thank you, everybody. It was, it was pretty moving. And again, thank you to everybody who participated. And I did send out cards to, to everybody just the other day. So, next thing I had on here, changing, changing gears, is new hires. I wanted to update you that we have been in the process. As you know, we've had a number of people that retired. So we were able to get a jump start on things. So I wanted to give you a quick update on where we are with regards to the hiring process. I'll start in the primary school. As you know, Nurse Gilrain is retiring. Cindy has offered the job to a Jennifer Walker. Excuse me, she is a, she has a Bachelor of Science from Rhode Island College. She's got two years of school nurse experience, eight years of, of registered nurse experience, including ICU and, and other things. And she has worked as a long-term sub at the, at the primary school. So she's familiar with how the school operates. And so she'll be joining us, Jennifer Walker. Cindy has offered and the individual's accepted a kindergarten position, Ariana Scarborough Bonina, who has been extremely busy. Ariana has very recently gotten married. Ariana has very recently, as of Sunday, completed her master's degree at Assumption College. And now she has her first teaching position. So she's been very, very busy. She has a Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education and History, a Master's of Arts in Special Education, and both of those from Assumption. And she is certified pre-K through two. She's also certified one through six in moderate special ed. And she has SEI endorsement. She's been a paraprofessional for two years at the primary school. She has worked, I believe, the extended program in the summertime. And she did her student teaching in Worcester at the Lincoln Street School in grade two. And has been serving in the position as a long-term sub for Andrew Janey, who we're happy to hear is doing well. Since, I, I forget when she started. It's been kind of a blur, a couple of months ago, has it been? Yeah. So Ariana has been in the, in the capacity teaching the kindergarten program and she's done very well. And then we also have Melissa Mulvar is transferring up to the second grade. So we had a special education position at the primary school. And Allison Bruner is being appointed. She has served as the administrative assistant to Mrs. Sosha at the primary school for three years. She has a Bachelor of Science from the University of Toledo in exercise science and pre, pre-physical therapy. She has a master's degree in special education from the University of Toledo. She has seven years of classroom experience in special education, both moderate and severe. She has taught in Arizona and in Ohio and in Worcester, Worcester, Massachusetts, not the Worcester, Ohio, if anybody's confused. There is a Worcester, Ohio, just in case I wasn't aware. My daughter went to the University of Worcester in Ohio one year. And so that also in turn has created an opening for an administrative assistant because she has taken the job as a, as a teacher. She, her husband had moved a little bit, but they seem to be now, he has a franchise locally for a restaurant. And they're pretty ensconced now. So she decided that she wanted to get back into, into the teaching, which is what her, her real career was supposed to be. At the elementary school for Mr. Bell, we have hired a fourth grade teacher. As you know, Ms. Whuppiar retired in January, the beginning of January. So we hired Allison Keiko. Allison has been, also been very busy. She is, just got engaged and she just bought a house. So there's a lot of things going on. She's a graduate of Framingham State. Her bachelor's is a Bachelor of Arts in Liberal Studies and Language Arts, as well as Elementary Education. She did a student teaching in Grafton at the Millbury Street School. And she has served in the capacity since January as the long-term sub and has done a really nice job. And the committee has brought her forward for the fourth grade position. And then the last position, which we, we took care of yesterday, at the middle school, we have a special education position. Maria is retiring and we interviewed and we've hired Sean Morgan. Sean works in the district as a, an ABA in the Flex Center at the elementary, at the elementary school. He is also in the, in the Air Force reservist. He began his, his, his time period in, in March of 2014 and it ends in March of 2020. So he is, he's near completion of his reservist. We did talk a little bit about that. He has a bachelor's degree in history from the University of Massachusetts in Dartmouth. And he has his master's degree in international relationships from the University of Nottingham in England. He is also certified elementary one through six, history five through eight, eight through twelve. He is crisis prevention certified. And he has just finished and receives his provisional in moderate special education. And he will be coming to the middle school working in grade seven and eight, I believe. And so those are all of the people. I, I wanted to get back to you and let you know that we had in fact been doing a lot of interviewing and hiring. And we have some positions still available as well. Brian is interviewing for secretary. Mrs. Sosha will be interviewing for secretary. And, oh, in a preschool, now we'll get the preschool position that will be, that you've done interviews for as well part-time.
Secretary, someone who runs the school.
Someone who's in charge of the place. Someone that tells you what to do, when to do it and how to do it. Excellent. So there's all the new hires. And then Ms. Keegan will talk a little bit about the 2020 budget update.
Okay, as, as you are all aware, we did have the town meeting last Monday on, it's May sixth.
May sixth, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And just a reminder to everyone that in April, we did have our public hearing and we did bring the budget down to what we were fairly certain was going to be the budget appropriation, which was thirty million, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars, which represented a two percent increase over the prior fiscal year FY19's approved appropriation. That does include the reductions of district support positions in the amount of forty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars, point six FTE faculty position, thirty thousand, nine oh six. Sipon positions, those are department head positions, the amount of twenty-six thousand, six seventy-seven, some textbooks, seven thousand, one thirty-two, and Chromebooks in the amount of forty thousand. So we did bring it down to, to that amount. So we do not need to revote the budget because we actually did do that work for the public hearing that was held on April third and you so voted at that time. So I will be presenting the budget as it stands now to, of course, the town accountant so that she can enter it into munis when we begin FY2020. But with all the kinds of ups and downs and reiterations, I wanted to kind of update, school committee just remind everyone that we don't have to vote it again. And also for the public to be aware as well. We were hoping for a, what we consider a very modest increase of three point one six percent, which would have included those positions that I just enumerated and those few other items, two textbooks and Chromebooks and Sipon positions. But that did not include, of course, the amount that we were looking to, you know, move the district forward, which would have been an, an additional two hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred dollars. So, but we will, we will proceed. We will implement the budget as it is now. There is some possibility, some possibility that there may be some additional revenues that may come to the school department, special town meeting in November. That being said, you know, we do appreciate that. But the timing is difficult for a school department in particular, because of course, school starts late August. And this scheduling particularly for the middle school and the high school. So scheduling kind of predicates positions and hiring and implementation of various programs, a curriculum. And of course, you want that to begin on the first day of school. So therein lies some problems there. But that being said, again, we may have some opportunities to take a look at things in summertime and, and maybe have some discussions if it does come to fruition or we are kind of provided with a more of an assurance of some revenues coming our way in November. So we'll just see what happens. But as always, as we always have been, we will move on and, and we will conduct ourselves accordingly as we always have. We will all pull together and we will do a bang up job with the money that we do have for all the students at Douglas Public Schools, so.
Yes, just.
I mean, I think she's done a great job, Courtney's done a great job of summing it up. But I would, once again, and I know I'm preaching to the choir here because everybody that's in this room right now understands it. But as, as Courtney mentioned, the, the decisions that had to be made in order to get to that two percent, I think it's really important that the public understands that they, that it is impactful and it will have an impact on what we do day in and day out. You know, the, the biggest issue, of course, was that as you recall, we had presented some additional positions that were part of the moving forward. The STEM position at the middle school is the one that I think is the most concerning to Mr. Romano's credit. He has had to make some adjustments because we wanted to do the health position. We think we've, we've addressed some of it, not in its entirety, I don't think, Mr. Romano, but a little bit more effectively so that we have a better, a better grasp. We really want to get that health program, six through ten, really ironed out and so forth. So he's done some things that will, again, when you do something like that, something has to go, which is some electives that won't be offered because that teacher will have to be teaching the health classes. But again, it did allow us to put the math, the, I'm sorry, the art teacher back in the art classroom because of your new requirement for art as a graduation requirement. So we've had to, within that, that amount, we have made some adjustments, some changes, some modifications in order to still do some things to move us forward a little bit more effectively. But it is, it is still, no matter how you, you work, look at it, it will be impactful. The department chairs possibly at the high school, based on the NIESC feedback that we'll give one, I believe in a couple of weeks, that we can share with you. one, I believe in a couple of weeks, that we can share with you. You're going to see that really having your department chairs are an integral part of what we need to do in order to address some of the shortcomings that are addressed in NIESC, that we don't have them, so it's hard to do that, so. But as Courtney said, we will soldier on, as we always have, but I would be remiss if I didn't indicate, and I know that you all know that, because you're intimately involved with it, but it will be impactful.
Yeah, so just while we're on the subject, since the last time I talked, I think the House budget had come out, and there was a very modest increase in minimum Chapter 78. Since then, the Senate's Ways and Means budget has come out, and that number has not changed at all from what the House was, despite Senator Fatman's indication that he thought the Senate was going to be doing more than what the House had. And if they did, it's not, it's not dropping to the Douglas line of Chapter 70, let's put it that way. I've already sent them an email and some social media communications, noting my displeasure with this. I would encourage, you know, anyone concerned with our budgets to do the same. The budget is not over, there's still, the Senate needs to debate individual amendments and earmarks and whatnot, so there's still maybe some hope that something better might come out of it for Douglas, but I think any communication they get from the residents of Douglas will help at this point, so I'd encourage you to contact them. They are usually very responsive. I know for a fact that they read the things that they get from me, so.
I have asked Mr. Sousa to keep an eye on the loading dock, just in case the one-to-one Chromebooks should show up. I did reach out to both Senator Fatman and to Representative McKenna. Representative McKenna did get back to me and indicated that he wasn't able to get it carried through in his side. Mr. Fatman, Senator Fatman indicated that he's confident that we're going to get them, so we're going to keep an eye on the loading docks at each of the schools, and when they show up, we'll be very grateful.
Could you, is there a way to reiterate what you said we didn't get? Like, I know it was Chromebooks, but what were the other things, or?
We had.
Well, we keep track of that as we go along, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, like, when we, I know you always publish like the budgets and things like that, but can that be included, just so that we have that in front of us to remind us that, you know, those things are there, and if there is, I hate to say, we find money, but, so we can keep that in the back of our head when we're voting on things that.
Oh, I always, oh, yes, absolutely. Well, and again, you know, things can change as well.
Right.
So, okay, things do change, because the tighter a budget gets, you have virtually no flexibility, so you have to become, and which we have become very adept in being very creative, and you have to keep, things do keep changing, because priorities can change, because you're dealing with so little. You know, I know I've been lamenting a little bit about a prior, actually, my first school district that I worked in 10 years ago, we prepared a budget, it was voted on, we implemented it. That was it, you know, it was so, those days are so long over. And you used to have some buffers as well, but we are very, very, very tight, but things can change, so we, this is what we did from the original proposed, but in part of what I'm trying to say is, we spent a lot of time, a lot of leadership team meetings, looking at things over and over and over again.
Right.
And out of that, sometimes things change, too.
I mean, so we have a priority, priority list that I, we actually had a meeting today, and I gave out the things that were on that list, and it doesn't include any of the things that we had talked about in the moving forward part of it with different positions. It doesn't include, for example, a special education teacher at the middle school that we desperately would like to add, we just completely took that out of the, it doesn't include the digital technology that we talked about, we just simply took that out of it, it doesn't include the health position, because we took it out of there. But we do have a list of all the things, and should there be some money that does come forward, we would collectively sit down and prioritize, and then we would bring it back to you, Julie, so that you guys would then be able to give your input as to what you think is the real priorities and so forth. So we're, we've, yeah, we have it documented, we have a list of it. Right now, we haven't really published anything, because we would need to talk to people and let them know their positions may not be in place going into the next school year. So there are some, there are some people that will have to be notified that their position is being eliminated within the next couple of weeks or so, so then we can put everything out there.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, just sort of speaking practically, I know that before taking the seat and coming to some of the meetings prior to this, I wasn't watching the live feed, and I wasn't watching the recordings, but man, do I get papers sent home from the schools about bingo and box tops, and I go through all of them.
Yeah.
Is it, has it been discussed, or is it ever an option to send home a piece of paper to all the parents that say, these are the things that we wanted to do that we cannot do? We were going to get Chromebooks, we were told, but we did not get them. These are the email addresses, this is a sample of what you can send.
I think that that would create some animosity within the town, between the town and the school district and so forth.
Yeah, it might be borderline not, because it's kind of.
And you're really not supposed to promote.
Right, yeah.
So, but, you know, and again, and you're right, not everybody is sitting home watching this like they've watched Game of Thrones, and everybody knew that Arya was going to exact revenge. There was no surprise there at all, right? I mean, we could agree to that.
Spoiler alert, Mains, please, some of us are maybe a week behind on this stuff.
Okay, so, well, that was two weeks ago, so that's all right. If you're a week behind, you're really in trouble, because it's all going to come to a close next, this weekend, so get caught up. But, so, you know, we've done all the things that we can do, I think as best we can, to try to get information out there without crossing any, I actually thought about, you know, maybe a letter to the editor, and I thought, oh, I don't know.
Right.
It just wouldn't be well-received, I think, so.
All right. I think that the challenge that we have is that we're trying, we're trying to sell Douglas to the kids here in this town.
Yeah.
And, you know, we were on that path of, okay, we're going to explore this, we're going to explore this, and we're keeping kids in the town, and it's just like, I don't want that bubble to burst.
I agree with that.
And that's why I want it to stay in the back of our heads.
And I would still say, you know, there are things that were, you know, cutting, that were cutting, based on this budget, but there are also things that we added throughout this year as well, so I think net-net, where we're starting next year is going to be higher, you know, at a higher level of service than when we started this year.
Right.
It's not where we want to be. Some things are going to be lost that we have, but we also got some things this year that we didn't have.
Yeah.
So, and it goes to Julie's point, you know, and me and Mr. Mains have had some discussions around, again, something that go to home, everybody, that kind of highlights some of those things, like, this is how we improved the district this year.
Right.
You know, we've added these positions, and maybe as part of that, there's the, here's the things we'd still like to do, and actually, we even talked about that, here's the things that we're looking at, you know, which might be, yeah, we need to get Chromebooks, which we didn't have, you know, or there's positions that we're looking at that just don't fit in the budget right now. So I think we've had some discussions around, how can you do that in some kind of a year-end pamphlet letter, you know, brochure, whatever it might be, and then even following up something in the, you know, come September, saying, hey, welcome back, here's the things that, you know, since we last saw you in May, you know, some things changed, we were able to buy those Chromebooks.
Yeah.
Some extra money came through from the state or whatever, so I think there's some value in some bookend communications that go home directly to, you know, like you said, in everybody's folders, because everyone sees that stuff. I guarantee people aren't seeing these meetings.
Or, I mean, that's like, that's just an example.
No, it is, yeah.
Like, if there's something on the website, I mean, and it doesn't have to be that specific, I just think, you know, I overhear in town things like, oh, you know, well, why do they need more money? They need their third laptop in their desk, and it's, you know, like, there's always, so, you know, and as a parent, I would not have known prior to a few months ago, these are the specific things.
Yeah.
So I understand what you're saying, it's a tough road to balance between wanting to highlight the good and the good that's being done, but also, yeah, I think if you want parents to reach out to, or the community to reach out to our representatives.
Yeah.
I think that there's probably a lot of people who are burnt out, but I think that there are people with younger children.
Yeah.
Who perhaps are not yet, and would have vested interest in.
Yeah, so I think it's different, you know, again, it's probably a little tricky for the school administration to get involved in some of that.
Yeah.
I think that's something that we as a committee, you know, individually.
Yeah.
Can probably do more of.
Okay.
You know, we're more of the political arm of our school district.
Yeah.
And it's probably something that probably falls to us to try to do to a certain extent, whether it's through social media, or just through whatever our circle of friends and associates are.
Build our immense power, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Brett's point of some sort of a brochure, and we talked a little bit about it, and I thought the admin team about it, because we want to promote, you know, things like teen night out, or the unified sports, or fist bump and so forth down there, and different things that are going on throughout the school on a regular basis, the talent show, things like that, that we want people to see, which is promoting what's going on, but then at the backside also, you know, what we would like to do, and the upside to all of this, if there is an upside, is that we did not cut any classroom teachers, we did not cut any, any special education teachers, we did not cut any admin members, and quite honestly, having sat in this room for a number of years, that's the third year in a row, fourth year in a row, that we haven't cut any classroom teachers? I think it's the third.
Eighteen, nineteen, twenty, to thirty, FY20, I guess, thirty. But you also have successful band and chorus.
Yep.
That's coming back.
Right.
You can look at the numbers and how it's going, you have sports, we're getting awards for sports, I mean, these are so many great things, there's so many great things out there.
So we want to trumpet that.
And it's just.
But your point is well-taken, we don't want, to me, next year, next year is a critical year, because, and I know that we've talked about this with the committees and so forth, is that you can't lose momentum. So, you know, if we can bring a few things in and get some things done this year to keep us moving forward and keep the positive nature of what's going on here going, that'd be great, and then if we were able to, for the next year's budget, bringing the digital technology teacher at the elementary school, bring in the special education teacher here at the high school that we need, so we can do a better job with collaborative instructional support and so forth, then I think we continue to move forward. The animal and plant science, I've actually had people who have reached out to me, and they said, what's the story with the animal and plant science? Is that going to happen? And I, you know, I had to tell them that, at this point, no, but I remain optimistic that in the 2021 school year, that we will begin the process of offering those courses.
We have to, because look at Norfolk Aggie, it's taking kids away.
Yep.
That's a huge amount of money that we're sending out.
Correct. And you would get kids to come here that were interested in other areas, so. But your point is well-taken, Becky. And it'll take us a little bit of time, I'm hoping to get it done, I don't know if we'll have it done in time for the end of the school year, but we can maybe consider doing something in a flyer, and send it out as a mailing type of thing, or post it around, post it around the community, so people can pick it up in different locations.
Thank you.
And so that is everything that we had for the superintendent's report.
Okay. School committee and supplementary report, accounts payable report.
Okay, on May 2, 2019, I signed 10 batches, totaling $219,120.63. And May 9, 2019, 11 batches, totaling $95,772.74, and nothing unusual.
Okay. Any questions on our accounts payable report? So Becky, just so you know, we have all the details of everything that she signed for during this report there, if you'd like to go through it. Just ask her, she'll send it on down to you, take it home for use, bring it back, wherever you want. So moving on to our consent agenda, first up, we have school committee meeting minutes from April 24. So, I did not see anything out of place after our quick cools little hit early this evening. Anyone else have any issues with our April 24 meeting minutes? Okay, so do not have any issues, I look for a motion to approve our April 24, 2019 school committee meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 24, 2019 school committee meeting minutes.
Motion, Kelly, thank you.
Second.
Second from Lisa. Any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, I know we have one abstained. Okay. Moving on, we have our May 1, 2019 school committee meeting minutes. Similarly, I did not see any issues. Did anyone else have issues with our May 1 meeting minutes? Seeing none. So if we don't have any issues, I would like to see a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 1, 2019 school committee meeting minutes.
Motion from Kelly.
Second.
Second from Lisa. Any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
Abstained.
We have one abstained. Okay. Next up, executive session minutes from, we have three different dates here, October 3, 2018, November 7, 2018, and December 5, 2018. All of this past year, mostly.
Do the laws separately?
Yeah, I think we can do these separately, it's a smaller batch here, so. These are all regards to our superintendent's contract, we knew Mr. Mains' contract for this past year generally. I don't know if there was any other residual topics in there, but I don't believe there were. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the October 3, 2018 executive session meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 3, 2018 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion from Kelly.
Second.
Second from Lisa. Any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
Abstained.
We have one abstained. Okay, and then we have our November 7, 2018 meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion.
No, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept the executive session meeting minutes of November 7, 2018.
Motion from Kelly.
Second.
Second from Lisa. Any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
Abstained.
We have one abstained. And lastly, we have our December 5, 2018 executive session minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the executive session meeting minutes of December 5, 2018.
Motion from Kelly.
Second.
Second from Lisa. Any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
Abstained.
One abstained. Okay. Next up, school choice consideration by grade, Mr. Mains?
So, as you know, we recently had a vote, and we voted to continue to be a school choice district, and so at your place, we provided you with the most recent information on class sizes, basically taking.
So I just wanted to note that you hinted out, so there was a sheet in your packet that had one recommendation, you had a second sheet that's separate, that has a different recommendation, so please go to the separate sheet if you can.
So we got together today and reviewed it, and again, these are just recommendations, of course, it's up to the committee to decide. So what I would like to do is just kind of go real quickly, so pre-K, we do not do choice at pre-K, so there will be no, no school choice at pre-K. Kindergarten, as you know, right now, we're at 98 with four teachers, and we're optimistic that it'll be a fifth teacher. With the four, it is 25, 25 students per grade, per classroom, excuse me. Even if we get a fifth teacher, it'll be at 19. The admin team has recommended to the committee that we close kindergarten. Grade one is at 86 students, moving forward with four teachers, are 21.5 students per grade at grade one. The committee, the admin team is recommending that we keep that grade closed as well. Grade two has 81 students with four teachers, so right now, it's at an average of 20 students per grade, per classroom. The admin team is recommending no more than seven, or fewer than seven possible students to go into grade two. Grade three is at 88, there are four teachers, it's 22 per class size, recommendation there because of the size is to, is to close third grade. Fourth grade is at 102, there are four teachers, it's 25.5 students per grade, we recommend that that be closed. Grade five is at 86, four teachers, it's at 21.5. At most, we think we can handle is two, or one, or if the committee's feeling is that they want to, we could, we could, we would go along with possibly keeping it closed. Grade six has 81 students, four teachers, 20.25 per class size, no more than seven, and certainly fewer than seven, there is room for some students in grade six. Grade seven is 103 with five teachers, it's an average of 20.75. That actually should say seven, I didn't change the eight, it should say seven, I apologize for that, we did make a change to that. Seven or fewer there as well. Grade eight has 121 with five teachers, we're averaging 24 and a half students, recommendation for grade eight is for it to be closed. The high school, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, in our discussion, we felt that per grade level, no higher than a hundred and ten students. We're not recommending that we get to a hundred and ten, but we would, we would not want to go above a hundred and ten for any of the grade levels. That does, as we talked about today in our meeting, does open up some concerns because if you're taking in a good number, you may have some unanticipated costs in there that, that may have an impact. But we certainly will have some seats available. So if you look at grade nine, coming forward, and Brian, this is accurate, right? Ninety-eight students in grade eight right now, coming out of grade eight. So you're going to lose twenty to BVT. You're at seventy-eight and you're going to lose, I think it's three to Norfolk, and you're going to lose a few to private. So that number could be as low as seventy-five, which is a ridiculously low number. I don't, I don't ever recall that being the number there. So there is room for, for students in grade nine. Grade ten, there are ninety-six students moving forward from nine to ten. We figured fourteen is the highest, certainly fewer is a possibility. Grade eleven is ninety-three. We think that you could, again, go a hundred and ten. The max you could do is, is seventeen to get to a hundred and ten or fewer. And then grade twelve is a hundred students in grade twelve next year that we think you could take ten. And so we just thought, because we, by July one, we would have to make these decisions anyways. And because we have applications that have come in and we've, we're sitting on them, it would be good to let people know we do not have an opening so that they can then go look for another opportunity rather than sitting on them until July. And that's kind of why we're bringing it forward to you.
I, I think that the people that made these recommendations have a little bit better knowledge than myself. So I, I trust what they're saying. My only thoughts on this were, first of all, with, with kindergarten, did you say we can't take school choice in kindergarten? Or you said pre-K, you can't?
Can't take it in K either. Even with, even with the fifth teacher, we'll be at twenty, basically twenty students.
And, well, the only reason why I'm asking is just because I feel like that's the time when we could get kids from other towns and then they get settled in. That's fine. I understand your reasoning behind that. And then in twelve and eleven and even ten, why normally would somebody school choice in from another town? Like that excessive amount, school choice in? Or has that ever happened?
Yeah, we do get a lot of students to choice in from different towns. And, and what happens a lot of times is, is people will come out of either a parochial school and opt to choice into our school in grade nine. So we do see a lot of students who, who jump into school choice nine.
Well, I mean, after, after ninth grade. I get nine.
Even eleven and twelve, you'll get, you'll get them, yeah. You'll get them to come in that will, that will look for an opportunity. You know, we may have a course that they, that they can't get somewhere else. We have, may have a program that they can't get somewhere else. They may just be looking for a fresh start.
That's where more I'm thinking of, that they're looking for that fresh start.
Yep.
And I just wonder if those numbers are really high for tenth and for eleventh and twelfth.
I can't say that in the time that I was, and Josh chimed in, that the kids that were looking for fresh starts turned out to be problematic or otherwise. I'm not going to say it's a hundred percent, but it's, it's certainly the exception than it is the, the rule. But to your point, and we had this conversation, when it's grade twelve and it's January and they're looking to come in, you're a hundred percent right. Hundred percent right.
And I'm not sure we're saying that we would actually expect to get seventeen, eleven.
No.
But we're leaving that door open. That's, that's all I'm saying.
But at a hundred and ten, this, this, this building can function well at, at four hundred and forty students with the, with the space and teachings.
Do we have any thoughts on how many eleventh graders we, we might get, you know, coming in from passing variants?
Could be one, two, could be drips and drops, could be five or six. I don't think you'll get, I don't think you'll get, you'll never get seventeen.
You got ten ID shots.
I'd be real, I'd be surprised, yeah.
I mean, obviously, if we had an issue, it would come the middle of the school year and we started to see an influx of kids wanting to apply and there was, we could, we could deal with it then too.
Well, and that, and that's why I want to come back in, 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 in October and, and close it because by November one, I, because we got caught this year. I think we waited too long to shut down any, any more school choice. And we had students that Josh was running into some problems at the high school with the, with students, you know, taking flight and trying to finish out their high school in, in somewhere else. And that's, that's never really a promising practice. So I, I agree, we, we should close it earlier rather than later. And so by doing this, people will know that we're open. When they call, we'll be able to tell them. And when, when they call and we're closed, we've made that decision that they're closed and they can go look elsewhere for another, for another opportunity rather than waiting till July. In some cases, we actually went beyond July, which technically we should, I'm supposed to go by July first with that.
So I would say maybe we should increase ninth grade then.
Well, you, you could.
Go back.
I don't think you'll get twenty anyways.
You're going to have seventy-five kids maybe, so.
Right.
Twenty's only going to bring you maybe ninety-five.
And, and the fact that we have a small group coming forward, I, I would never anticipate that we would get anywhere near that number of students of twenty coming forward for a school choice into a particular grade. I mean, five is really, is really a large number per grade if, if you get that. To be honest with you, it's two or three at the most that come into a, a grade level. So I only put those up there, those numbers up there because we said that a hundred and ten would be our max. We certainly don't need to stay at those numbers. Or you can stay, or you can maintain those numbers as an option. But I don't have for any, have any inclination that grade nine is going to get twenty kids that all of a sudden they're going to show up and want a school choice here.
What about the other aspect of it?
With the, with regards to.
People moving in?
Well, we can, I mean, if, if they apply, I mean, there, as I mentioned, that there could be some unknown costs, you know.
Yeah, so the, the concern that I had was we only receive five thousand dollars for each student, which doesn't come anywhere near what it costs to educate a student. And then, you know, once you, depending on how high your number goes, I just feel the exposure is large for other unanticipated costs that then we are, we are on the hook for, for maybe possibly twelve years. And the, remember, we do get a specialized increment, but it's very little, very, very little. And I do know that last two years particularly, two to three years, all of a sudden, that started being an issue where I am going to expect, where I never saw it in my prior, all the years prior, never. Twenty-six years, I never saw it, all of the last three years. So that's the only concern that I had.
School choi, there's, there's always a risk to taking a student in as to, you know, not, and it's, it is, it is supposed to be random and arbitrary and.
Right.
And, you know, you, some, some districts violate that and they ask, they ask straight up, we, we, we're not making any decisions till you give us your, your IEP or you give us your attendance record or you give us your discipline record, which is illegal.
Yeah, you can't do that.
But some people do that. But what Courtney is saying is that you never know what the, you know, some unexpected and unanticipated cost that could show up in, in school choice.
So, um, hopefully, people apply for school choice? Is it applications, apply the right word?
Right.
So as, as people apply, if we have closed grades, do we waitlist people? Do we, how does that work?
We can waitlist them, but most likely, it's certainly much more appropriate to tell them that we, we are closed because they're going to want to go look and have a place. They want to be settled in advance.
Right.
But, you know.
So I guess, yeah.
So closed, closed, if we're closed, we're closed.
We're going to tell them we're closed, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I'd be interested in seeing how many we've turned away, you know, if we revisit this in July, just to say, you know.
Right. And what, you know, there are some, there are some people who have applied at, especially at the lower grade levels. And right now, we've, we've told them that we're in a holding pattern.
Yep.
Waiting on, on the decision of the committee as to where we want to go with it. You know, because sometimes that, that creates siblings and so forth. And, and you accept one, but before you know it, it might be four a few years down the road because you have to accept their siblings and so forth, so. So, you know, that's just kind of our, our, our thought process on this. I, I think that maybe a simpler way is that we could say that nine, ten, eleven, and twelve are presently open and we could come back, you know, sometime in August and, and update that. If we think we'll get to a point where we've, we've received too many students at the high school level, you could always both of them close it down. I don't think you're going to have that.
I don't think that would be an issue. I think it's more the younger grades. And I think I hear what Courtney's saying, like maybe, maybe two and seven, maybe we have to, maybe we should lower those numbers. I don't know, two or, two and six, I mean.
It's just as the higher the number, the more liabilities, which are just statistically speaking, that's all.
And we, we don't, Brian, you don't tend to get a lot of students coming in grade six, seven, and eight in school choice, do you? You don't, you don't see an inordinately large number of people coming in six, seven, and eight. Usually, they're already.
We, we do have a fair amount of students attending that are sending.
But school choice, you don't get a lot, I mean, a handful in all three grades maybe? I mean, it's, it's really small. But you can, you can certainly drop those numbers down a little bit if you'd like to, but.
Yeah, any?
You might get seven.
Any suggestions?
National honesty kids coming through the door. You know, it's, that's.
The only one that I, if I had to change a number, if it was just up to me, just looking at what you gave me and listening to what you say, would be grade two because that's the beginning of the elementary school experience, right? Is it two?
And that would, what that, what that would bring is, is, is a class size. And what John and I had talked about was twenty-two is really a great number, you know, for, for those class sizes. That's not, that's not an inordinately large number of students in, in, in those grade levels. And, and that's the only reason why we put seven because you've got four teachers and it would, it would work out to twenty-two total.
But you could have people moving into town too.
Correct. So that, that, that's a great point. That, that number is total number of, so if we, if all of a sudden, we had, you know, six people move into grade two, move into town from grade two, but we only have one seat available for a school choice person because we would consider them, that those, those are the openings that we have. But as you add students, that number has to change.
Yeah, so we're really approving kind of a class, a number of student cap per grade because, you know, that, that cap could be filled by either a new, a new student in town or a school choice.
So you could, you could say, for example, in grade two, maximum of seven.
Additional students.
But not to exceed twenty-two class, class, class average of, of twenty-two students.
And with the new developments going on too, that could become a factor.
I mean, we can't cap the, obviously, we can't cap the number of students in town.
Right.
Yeah, because.
But the base, the school choice could be based on the cap that we have here.
So basically, what we're doing is we're saying that we don't want to go, I, I think you've got to be careful about saying class sizes because all of a sudden, you get fifteen people that move in and, and your class size is twenty-six. When you said twenty-two, you've got to hire another teacher, so.
Okay. Yeah, so I think we need to approve the recommendations on, on the number of available seats is probably the better way to go.
We can change the, the nine, ten, eleven, and twelve?
No, I think, I think it's fine the way it is, to be honest with you.
Just simply say that we're open at, at the, at the high school and that the, the committee will, will expect updates from Mr. Romano on a regular basis.
Yeah, I think it's fine leaving the numbers that are there because I don't think we ever expect to see us exceed those. But it would still, I'd still like to see not take any more than fourteen in tenth grade. So I think it's fine just leaving that number there, so. Rather than just leaving it as, as open, you know, so.
And we can, you can always come back and revote that, but.
Yeah. Well, this gives us, you know, the community something to work with, you know, as we go into the summer when we, people are making those decisions and you guys have something to work with, so.
So why don't I, why don't I just read where we're at and then you can, somebody can say so moved. So the motion would be assumption of the effect of that we will accept the final version of the availability of school choice students by grade level that reads as, as follows. No school choice in the pre-K. Kindergarten, school choice is closed. Grade one, school choice is closed. Grade two, maximum of seven, not to exceed a class size of twenty-two. Grade three is closed. Grade four is closed. Grade five, two seats available, not to, not to exceed again twenty-two. Grade six, seven or fewer. Grade seven, seven or fewer. Grade eight is closed. Grade nine, twenty or fewer. Grade ten, fourteen or fewer. Seven, uh, grade eleven, seventeen or fewer. And grade twelve, ten or fewer. Or do a so move, that would do it.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the availability of school choice by grade level from Kelly.
Second.
Second from Lisa. Any other discussion? Okay, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none. Thank you.
And thank you for your indulgence with that and your patience with that. But I just think it makes sense to let people know that with, you know, our, our grade levels are closed and, and that there's no room, so we, we don't keep them waiting. Okay.
I believe we're, we had a hun, over a hundred already school choice in? That was it, was that it?
We were a hundred and thirty-two, I think it was, total.
Of our roughly thirteen, twelve hundred, thirteen hundred students, we were a hundred and thirty-two school choice. Thank you. Next, Douglas Primary School.
So she's going to come up and talk to us about the kindergarten. I think we've kind of addressed it a little bit, but she can, she can drive home the point.
Okay. So tonight, we're requesting the addition of a kindergarten teacher and a paraprofessional. And as I've been watching the, the numbers and reporting to you since February, the census from last year at this point in time was in the sixties. And this year, they were in the nineties. We have ninety-eight registered. So without the addition of a teacher, we would right now have twenty-four, twenty-five in a class. The phone rings every day with somebody new asking about kindergarten or first grade. So that's where we're at. With the addition, of course, the class sizes would be smaller, so it would give room for some of the move-ins. There are still seven people on the census list that have not reached out to us yet. So either they are going somewhere else or they just haven't registered. And it happens all the time. Last summer, we picked up over twenty. So that's a fear of mine.
But we have a confirmed ninety-eight right now.
We have a confirmed ninety-eight.
And did you want to tell them about how, you know, the rooms, you've got them all figured out in cars?
There's definitely room. We've had to have a plan to put in the extra preschool that we voted in the last meeting. So we'll be putting in another kindergarten class. So we're making some moves in the building, so thinking ahead too, so that we do minimum amount of moving. But it will work.
It'll fill the building up. I walked the building with Cindy today and there is definitely space, but it won't be, it won't be much more space beyond that.
Any questions or?
So with regard to the, oh, I'm sorry.
Doesn't say, if you want to go over funding, yeah, please.
With regard to the financial impact, um, the estimated cost for the one point oh FTE kindergarten teacher is up to fifty thousand. Very more likely to be less, but we, that's kind of the estimate that we typically use. One point oh FTE paraprofessional, up to eighteen thousand, eight forty-three. For a total cost of up to sixty-eight thousand, eight forty-three. I'm recommending the funding, funding source initially to be school choice revolving fund. But also, as you know, we haven't even started our FY two thousand twenty yet. So funds become available through vacancy savings or whatever. Can certainly accommodate it within the general fund if possible. And I, I kind of use that new language now only because I end up moving money back and forth and all that anyway. But certainly, the initial funding source will have to be a school choice revolving fund.
Okay. Any questions, comments? I know we've covered this a couple times. Well, Becky, you haven't, so I don't know if you have any, any questions or not. Yeah, this is a tough one. You know, we, we experienced kindergarten class sizes of twenty-seven, twenty-eight a couple of years ago. And, you know, I would classify that as, you know, not, not a great situation.
You're only kindergarten one year. You know, if you're in with twenty-seven kids, they're just, they're just dotted off on the, on the wrong, on the wrong foot. It's critical, so. And with, and with your preschool enrollments.
Right. Oh, yes.
So they're, they're coming in.
They're coming in.
You know, they're, they're like kindergarten and a half.
No, and, you know, the success of our preschool program has me hopeful that we're not going to see, you know, twenty students walking in the door, that a lot of students coming are already in our system now, so you're not going to get those twenties added late. But, you know, I think there's definitely potential for, you know, a seven or eight being added, added late, which is still going to put you at, you know, twenty-one, twenty-two in a classroom, so.
Just one other thing, Mrs. Soshin, when you posted the kindergarten position that you filled, how many applications did you receive?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four applications. So I'm confident we're going to find a kindergarten teacher.
Because you're so cute at that age.
They're all cute.
And the other good thing too, with regard to expanding the preschool program, which really helps with regard to moving up into kindergarten, first grade, is the preschoolers, more preschoolers are starting off in her building, getting established and, and learning all the ways and protocols. So that's really going to help out, I think, too, when they get to kindergarten as well.
Now, what about the paraprofessional positions? Because I know that we've had trouble filling those in other positions.
Right. I, I usually wait.
Anticipate applications?
I usually wait until August for teachers that are right out of college who haven't picked up a job yet. And that's how I have picked up a few. So I have a lot of certified teachers as paraprofessionals in the building. So I'm pretty confident that not all seventy-four will find a job. I might have my pick of the litter there.
I have sort of another newbie question. First, I'd like to say my older daughter was in one of the twenty-sevens.
Yes.
And your teachers are phenomenal, so let me just put that out there. I was terrified and, and she got a darn good education in kindergarten. I was terrified, and, and she got a darn good education in kindergarten.
Thank you.
So my question is, if this incoming kindergarten class is so large that it needs five teachers, what does that look like going forward? Are we going to, are you going to have to turn a kindergarten teacher into a first-grade teacher?
Could be.
Could be.
Right, so.
If the incoming grade is just a little bit smaller, you may have to have somebody move with them.
Right.
They got the first, and then, then figure it out as they get to second and third, so. And we, which is something that we've done.
We, we do all the time, yeah. Because that's what happens.
As they get to the older grades, fourth, thir- third, fourth, and fifth, you can accommodate. It's easier to accommodate larger numbers. Kindergartens really need smaller.
Yeah.
Right.
So it might not be a six-year process of five teachers, but it could be two or three, I guess.
Right.
And that's happened in the past, where, you know, I think we've, you know, you'll even see in the numbers that we just saw there, where, you know, you've got a class of eighty-one fifth graders now, or becoming sixth graders. But then the class before that was a hundred and three, you know, so it's, it's just, you, you don't know for your year, so we end up having to, you know, teacher moves from fifth to fourth, or second to first, or whatever it might be. I think on a pretty regular basis that, that happens.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Well, I guess the concern is, yeah, we're dipping further into school choice. We're, we've already dipped pretty far for this budget, so, you know, just to state the obvious there, but I, I do this things, this is something that we, we can't not do, is, is my opinion of it. And again, we'll, we'll, we'll figure out how to make it work, is, again, my thought, so. Anyone else has, anything else to say about it? If not, I'll look for a, a motion.
I move to approve a one-point-oh FTE kindergarten teacher estimated to cost up to fifty thousand dollars, and a one-point-oh FTE paraprofessional estimated to cost up to eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-three for the primary school for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year, to be funded initially from the school choice tuition revolving fund or general fund if salary vacancy funds become available.
Motion from Lisa.
Second.
Second from Becky. Excellent. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none.
So we'll get that posted. Reach out to Lauren about tomorrow, so you can have a meeting. So we'll get that posted, and.
Thank you.
Probably have some people that, that you've already interviewed, that you might want to call back and.
Sure do.
And maybe bring a few more in, so that if they don't get the job, they might want to become a paraprofessional.
Mr. Bell, would you like to join us? Going on a field trip.
So our third graders would like to go to the Roger Williams Park Zoo in Providence, Rhode Island on June third. We are using telstone buses, planning to use, I think it says three on the proposal, I think we talked to them today and got it done to two. We were able to accommodate it, along with a specialized transportation van. That would include our hundred, two third graders, ten staff members, and eighteen parents. And they will leave about eight-thirty and return by about one forty-five. They're going to take sack lunches and eat at the zoo, and we will have a nurse attending the field trip with us, and there are several nearby medical facilities as well. This will help us address our content for third-grade science. And cost-wise, PTO is going to contribute five dollars per student, and we are asking families to pay fifteen dollars per student, and we will have scholarships available for any students that need any assistance.
Any particular reason why Roger Williams versus Lica Southwick?
So, I, I, primary goes to Southwick, and so that, we didn't want to go to the same place. And also, there are some specific programs that they're planning to do at Roger Williams that tie to their standards. We looked also at the aquarium in Boston, but the drive-wise is not.
Spend most of your time on one of us.
It's too far, so we were trying to find something that was close enough that we could spend enough time there to get what we need to out of the trip. And so that was, that was kind of the, the landing point that we ended on, met our needs the best.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Looking for a motion.
I move to approve the third-grade field trip to take place on Monday, June third, to Roger Williams Park Zoo located in Providence, Rhode Island.
Motion from Lisa. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Julie. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Thank you.
Don't run away, just stay there. Ryan and Josh, if you don't mind bringing up a chair. Because there's only two there, and I'm not real good at math, but there's four of you, so you probably need two chairs. Earlier today, I did eight times eight. I'm really, I'm on a, I'm on a math roll today.
I'm so impressed. Fifty-six, right.
Said there would be no math.
Small to large? All right, so I think last year, we did a huge overhaul, we all did, on the handbook, so it was very minor changes. And thanks to my school council for going through this, because it's not that fun to read through a handbook. But our only changes that we picked up on, that we had in our handbook, that we were peanut-free, and we're actually peanut-safe. So that's one change. For treats for birthdays, we added the freeze pops, and that was approved with our school nurse. And the lockdown drill stated that we would have one every fall, which we traditionally don't really do one in the fall, that we changed it to during the school year, so just minor. Those are the only things.
Falls usually fire drills.
You guys want to approve as we go, or wait till we hear everything and do them as a batch? Any thoughts?
We'll probably do it as a batch, right?
Let's wait till we hear everything. Okay, thank you.
All right, at the elementary school, we had a couple more. On page thirteen, there was some information about school hours. It said eight oh five, and our current practice of letting, not school hours, but letting students in the door, we let them in currently at eight-ten, and I think that's been practiced for a while, so we're just updating that to match what we've been doing. We have some recess guidelines, it's a building we've been using, so we've put these in. So basically, if it's below twenty degrees, we stay inside. If it's between twenty and thirty-five degrees, we go outside unless there's a significant wind chill. And some required clothing, we ask that students wear winter coats and enhancing gloves are encouraged.
Required clothing of none?
I, I thought it was, I saw.
Is that more appropriate? No.
I can change that to NA, because I, I think there is some required clothing still.
No, my son, you know.
I agree. With outdoor, thirty-five to fifty-five, we will be outdoor, and kids will wear jackets, and anything higher than fifty-five, up to ninety-five, we will be outdoor with no required clothing, or no additional required clothing. And above ninety-five, we stay inside. So those are some building guidelines that we've been using this year, and we thought we'd put it in the handbook, so that parents have that information as well. The next two are just about clerical things. Each year, we have to update the dates, so rather than that, we said remove it and make it more generic and refer to the school calendar for open house and parent-teacher conferences, rather than having the specific times listed. We had some information about volunteering, and any Cory checks. Cheapering on a field trip is one that always comes up, that parents don't know that they have to be Cory checked, so we're going to add a bullet there, just saying that that's included in that bolded list as well. And then we have a couple with, in our code of conduct, about e-cigarettes and vaping were not included, tobacco products were not included. And we have seen some of that at the elementary schools, so we wanted to make sure that was included as well in our, in our handbook. And then our five oh four coordinator has changed, and that is now our adjustment council, Miss Blessing, so just adding that in as well. Questions on any of those?
Yeah, I'm just on the art, again, that this article, substance prohibited in school, it says, uh, by students, is, is there a separate section that says by, by staff or others?
Would that be covered by, well, I, we can put.
It's a student handbook.
Is that covered by school district policy?
What's the statement again? I missed the.
Uh, so it's a state law prohibits the use of tobacco products, and it lists, you know, the various products by students on school grounds or at school-related functions.
So because there are no, there are no tobacco products allowed on school property, all staff members know that they can't bring tobacco products on, on to school.
Okay, so that's not, yeah, so it'd be, that would be, again, this is a student handbook.
Student handbook.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Thank you.
And honestly, the, the reason we needed it in there, like, when we're writing up our discipline letters and things like that, we need to have, we'd like to be able to refer back to our student handbook, district policies and things. So we're just including that, so that we can include that when we, when we do those things.
Thank you. Any other questions? Whole thing memorized here.
Again, the middle school is only names and dates, due to the, the extensive changes we made last year, and the tightening it up and trying to align it with the, the high school. It, it's served us well this year. We're, we're confident that it's pulling its weight, and we've got covered, what we need covered. Again, it's just names and dates, just updating it there, so very little in terms of verbiage.
Okay.
So for the high school, the same as Mr. Bell, we wanted to add the prohibition on, mine's a little bit heavier. Prohibition on vaping added to our tobacco policy, same as the elementary school. On searches on school property, so as, as the handbook evolved over time, a loophole was created where the phrase, "Upon receiving a parking permit at DHS, all vehicles are subject to search." Well, that implies that if you don't have a parking permit, your car can't be searched. And really, all, any vehicle on, on school grounds is subject to search, so I just want to take that phrase out. And also, it uses the phrase probable cause. Probable cause is the police, is a law enforcement standard for search. It's much higher than what a school administrator needs, which is just reasonable suspicion, so I want to replace that with reasonable suspicion. The academic dishonesty, we had a couple of situations this year that, as technology changes, and we try to stay only one step behind what kids learn to do, basically adding a bullet prohibiting the use of shared documents, like multiple kids turning in the same shared Google Doc as their own work. A bullet about turning in the same work to multiple classes or teachers for credit on different assignments. We had a student who turned in a research paper for two different teachers within a few days of each other. So, not a research paper, but an argumentative essay. And then the, the eighth bullet, the, the last bullet on there, we kind of added some more online tools that kids were using, like online translators, posted work from students at other schools. It happened this year. So two kids who were taking an AP course found AP homework that other kids had done and posted online. We don't really want them to do that, and then the, the online math apps. The page twenty-eight course requirements, we just updated the world language, fine arts, and electives to reflect the new graduation requirements. I took out the early graduation section, it's in the program of studies, and I'm, I don't want to say that, I don't want to encourage it, but it's certainly something that's possible, but I think it belongs more in the program of studies than in the student handbook. Changing classes, I added the sentence that the final decision regarding changes, changing schedules, will be with me. And then I clarified the end of the add-drop period. It said around, and then I think October first. I just made it, the add-drop period for classes ends with the first progress report, so there's no around, there's no gray, gray thing for it. And then, that it must be due to a compel, a compelling reason, which would then be determined by me. So if a student wants to change a course after that, it has to be approved by me, and there has to be a reason. It can't just be like, I don't like the teacher. I don't, you know, I don't think I want to take this course anymore. I'm just, I want to study hall instead. I wouldn't call that a compelling reason. The library, we modernized the language. There hasn't been a librarian for a few years, and so the language still had some things that referenced encyclopedias and things like that, that aren't really used anymore, so we took out a few bullets. And then we added in the, that students may request items via interlibrary loan, and the other sort of modern databases that students can use. We have a librarian now, so we have somebody who could look at that language and say, this is kind of old-school, so it helped. Dress code. We added some language to the, to the, in there about vaping. Basically, clothing that promotes vaping wasn't in there before, so it's just where it has, you know, tobacco, alcohol, I add the word vaping as well. I added a bullet prohibiting clothing that facilitates vaping. You can go online and you can buy a sweatshirt that has a little tube that runs up the sleeve and out, little neck hole where you have the drawstring, and it's for putting a vape tube. I wrote to that company, and I did not hear back from them.
Were you complimentary about the?
I was not complimentary about their.
That's probably why they didn't write back to you then.
Yeah, I, I may have said something about the worst aspects of capitalism were in their, were invited in their company.
Jumping in real quick, to go back with John Bell, and, and, and it's, the American tobacco industry will find some way to get us addicted to nicotine, and, and these are just two perfect examples of what's, what's, what's happening with this whole vaping thing.
If they have to put in a cool sweatshirt and make it taste like mango, so fourth graders want to use it, then that's what they'll do. And then I, I made a, so the, the whole sagging pants thing. Students buy belts, but apparently, they don't buy belts that work, because their, their pants end up down by their, on their thighs. I, and I, I really wrestled with this language. The bottom of shirts should meet the top of pants in order not show bare midriffs or undergarments. So if you want to wear your pants down here, well, you can, but your shirt needs to go down to there, too. So I'm trying to game it so it's very precise, like the top of your pants didn't meet the bottom of your shirt, I keep saying it wrong. So we'll, we'll try that. And that, that's like the bare midriffs, the bare backs, it's all covered in one thing, so it's, it's gender neutral as well. The rest of it was basically the same, I just had, had put the whole thing on there just, because it's easier to just copy and paste the whole thing. And then, so we've had some, some circumstances where staff members have been filmed by students, and they generally don't mean it maliciously, like, they just, they, they think that their science teacher's really funny, so they film him. And it's not with that teacher's permission, and that is against the law. And so it's already in the handbook, but in order to kind of highlight it and to try to put an end to it, we're going to add in, in the disciplinary chart that's in there, that kind of says first offense, you get this, second offense, this is the punishment, third. We're going to add it into there with specific punishments, just to kind of highlight the seriousness of doing that. You know, we live in a, you know, everybody has their phone on them all the time, and, you know, and that's, that's great if you're going to film, you know, government corruption inaction or something like that. It's not so great when you're filming your teacher doing their lesson and then posting it online or something, so we wanted to highlight that. And I think that was it. That was a lot.
Thank you. Follow-up questions to any of these? Much less between Golden and last year. Thank you. All right, so if there are no other questions, comments, I'm looking for a motion to approve all of the student handbook changes as they were prevented, presented this evening for each of the schools.
So moved.
Motion from Lisa. Thank you.
Second.
Second from Kelly. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none. Thank you. That brings us to the end of our consent agenda. Brings us to our school business and operation manager's report.
Okay, um, I have for you this evening, FY two thousand and nineteen, general fund budget transfers, number ten. Some of them are requests from administrators and the balance, well, she, the, most of them are, am I going through the general fund budget and, you know, taking care of the negative amounts, moving funds around? Are there any questions?
I move to accept our fiscal year two thousand and nineteen general fund budget transfers, number ten, for the May fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting, school meeting.
Thank you, we have a motion from Julie. Second?
Second.
Second from Kelly. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none. Thank you.
And then I have for you this evening, I think I said the last time I brought one of these, I thought that was the last check we would receive, but we did receive another payment regarding the students on the roof that did the damage, so the entire bill of one thousand, I believe it's one thousand five seventy-eight, has been paid. I think there's only a tiny bit left. So this is a reclassification, taking it out of our general fund and putting into the town property liability insurance account, which is where the, the checks have to be deposited.
So looking for a motion to approve the FY two thousand nineteen reclassifications from the school committee meeting, May fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Still moved.
Motion from Julie, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Lisa. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? All set.
Thank you very much.
I see another item in our packet here.
The ones to be signed as well, and the last thing I have here is a letter that we receive each year, 'cause we receive it if, whether we get something or we don't, but I always want to inform the school committee, so we did not receive circuit break of extraordinary relief this year, and just to remind everyone, in order to receive the extraordinary relief, we have to be twenty-five percent above the previous year's expenditures for, for special education. So that has happened, I think, twice in the seven years I've been here. So that's a, sort of a good thing and a bad thing. It's a good thing that the expenditures were, or didn't reach that amount, but it's a bad thing that we didn't get the extra funding, 'cause we certainly could use it, right, Neely?
Correct.
So certainly they, this has nothing to do with the irregular extraordinary, I mean, regular circuit break that they applied for, but this is the extraordinary relief, and, and again, it's always subject to appropriation, so even if you meet it and you would be eligible for it, they have to divvy up what's, what's left over among all the schools, so you never know really what that amount's gonna be, but I just wanted to make sure that you are informed of that. And that's all I have this evening.
Sorry, so I do, I don't wanna delay this anymore, but the, the subject, so I received an email, and I think you guys probably all did, it probably just came out to the school committee email list from, I can't remember what town it was, but just, again, advocating on behalf of certain amendments in, in the, in the state budget, and, and concerns over some of the amendments that are, that are out, or acts that are out there, in form being the Promise Act, which is the big act that's being pushed out there, that's kind of supposed to fully fund the recommendations of the foundation budget review committee and whatnot, but there, there are some nuances to that, where what they mean by funding, you know, Douglas may not receive any of the benefit of what they, depending on where they increase certain categories and whatnot, which scares me to a certain extent, because, you know, even if they did actually pass the, the Promise Act, we could see no benefit of it, and the state could say, yeah, we, we just fixed education funding, and Douglas is still in the position that we're in. So I'm, I'm gonna pass around that email to, to the rest of you. I, I think it's worth a, a read-through. It was, it was a gentleman from a school committee in a different town, very similar to Douglas. I contacted him, said I'm interested in hearing more, and we kinda had a little bit of an exchange. I think it's worthwhile looking into. There's some other acts out there that they're supporting, one in particular, as regards to special education, and the funding formula for that, again, decreasing it from four times the foundation budget to three times, as well as including special education transportation into that as well, which is, I think, a huge one for us there. So just, again, it's something you're gonna see from me, just give, give it a read-through. Don't be afraid to contact this guy, or let me know if you want me to contact him, if we wanna have a sit-down with this guy, and talk more about how districts like Douglas can kind of maybe work better together on, on some of these things at, at a statewide level, because I think, I think a lot of districts that don't look like Douglas are getting a lot of the attention right now, and that, that might, you know, be good for them, but it, it might not be so great for us, so something to consider.
And there were some groups, actually, I was attending two separate groups that had to do with trying to get groups like this, you know, situations like this, like towns like that, together, to try to push that, because we weren't the gateway community, they weren't within the beltway, or we weren't, you know.
Yeah, and I wanted to disparage any of that, but you know, a lot of focus has been on, on areas of, you know, again, lower income, or, you know, English as a second language in the communities, which again, Douglas doesn't meet, but doesn't mean that we don't have some significant needs as, as well.
Right.
So again, I, I think in particular, special education seems to be something that's a little more universal, and I, you know, I'd love to see us focus some of our attention with the state in, in that area, and, and how that gets funded. So that, that particular is where, where I'm interested in kinda pursuing some things. I know there's some things out there about rural, and having, you know, different aid formulas for rural, and I'm not sure where we're, you know, I think even, I think Senator Fabin talked about that last time, and I'm not sure where we would fall, you know, in a situation like that, I think we, we kind of, yeah.
We always fall, we always fall through the cracks.
We're in this, this bucket, and just, yeah, we are.
We do.
Yeah, so, all right.
But you're right, those are the biggest things, especially particularly special ed, is just, you know, if they did some of the things that you just enumerated, that would help immensely, and that would help us, as long as there's appropriation for it.
Okay, topics unanticipated. We are gonna need, I think, a brief executive session tonight, so with that, I'd be looking for a motion to enter executive session. We'll need a roll call vote to enter it, and we will not, we will return to public session only for the purpose of adjourning.
Correct.
So, motion, anyone?
Motion to.
Move to executive session?
Oh, I moved, I moved that we enter into executive session.
Thank you. Motion from Julie, a second from Kelly.
You want a roll call, that, right?
Yeah, so we'll roll call vote that, so a roll call vote means we have to just state your name and say aye, if you.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Curie Mulder, aye.
Brett Ogilvie, aye.